Good evening.
All right, haven't seen you for a while. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good thanks.
I think we're all good. All right, roll call please.
Trustee Wells.
Here.
Trustee Lawson. Trustee Marquez. Vice President Diaz-Solcom.
Here.
President McAvoy.
Present. Let's see, we had no closed session today, so I'll just start with bienvenidos si necesita interpretación en español. En español, por favor, busque la información en el chat. Gracias. Welcome everyone to today's meeting. It is October 6. And thanks for all for being here. I'll post the links in the chat again for the agenda as well as how to sign up for commenting. And I'll repost again as more people join. If you would like to speak to the board, please fill out the Google Doc and be sure to include your name so we know who to unmute when the time comes. And tonight you'll be given three minutes and more time if you need for translation. If the item you wish to address is not on the agenda, you will be called on during oral communication. If the item is on the agenda, you'll be called on when that item is being addressed. And as a reminder, this is a board meeting for board business. The chat feature is open for members of the public to ask the board members a clarifying question or staff a clarifying question or make a short comment, but probably best if you want to make an official comment to fill out the speaker's card and and as a reminder, because we're meeting virtually, all votes will be by roll call and we are recording the meeting. All right, so thanks for being here. And do I have any changes to the agenda?
I wanted to propose that we move 11.2 to 11.7 to consent. Those are the facilities agreement changes and memorandum of understanding with connect KIP and Rocketship. They look like things we just need to do, kind of regular business. And then maybe 11.8, the disposal of assets, which also kind of looked like regular.
So I will say we have a speaker's card for 11.7, so let's go ahead and leave that one on action. It's fine with me for the others that Mike presented. Any other comments on the agenda? Dr. Baker, did you want to pull those items or were you just?
No, I wanted to pull items.
Oh, go ahead.
So due to the fact that I would like to pull 9.1 and then also 11.1 and I recommend pulling this because Governor Newsom has made an announcement that California will acquire the COVID-19 vaccine for in-person school attendance. And our councils, all the district school district councils were meeting today at 1 o'clock to review the resolution and also to review the letters that we were all going to send. So I'd like to bring them back, these same two items at our next board meeting, which will be on the October 20th.
Yes, I think that's fine to pull 11.1, which was the resolution because that'll be changing. Let me just ask on the board members, did you have anything that you feel a need to keep 9.1 for discussion on the agenda? Are you okay waiting until the next board meeting?
I mean, just to be clear, that means there's no agenda item to discuss. Sort of usually we have a little bit of an open discussion item in there. I mean, this one looks very scoped to the item, so it makes sense. But.
Okay, I do see we have a speaker card for 9.1, so why don't we go ahead and leave this on the agenda, just recognizing there's not an official presentation? And then maybe Dr. Baker, you can just, we can, well, and I've been on some different meetings, we can just you know, state sort of what we've been hearing and what we can expect in the future, but no formal presentation, if that's okay. Okay, and also now we have a speaker card, so I do need for you to go ahead and add it officially to this. I don't see it on the speaker card list, so if you could, maybe I need to refresh and maybe that'll pop. Anyway, so no, it's still not there, so. All right. Well, you have a few minutes to get it on there. Okay. So, all right, so I think what we decided is in terms of the agenda, 11.1 is being pulled, 11.2 through 11.6 and 11.8 will go to consent. All right, do I have a motion to approve?
No, moved.
Second.
Okay, was that Janet Maria? Okay, thanks. All right, roll call please.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
Trustee Lawson. Trustee Marquez. Vice President Diaz-Solcom.
Hi.
President McAvoy.
Hi. All right. And do not have any oral communication? All right, so we're on to 6.1, the Citizens Measure T Oversight Committee.
Priscilla, did you?
I think Michael Bolander, the Chair for the CBOC Committee is here with us and will do the presentation. Do you see him, Kyle?
Yeah, so what's the name again, Priscilla?
Michael Bolander.
I don't see him, Priscilla.
I think it's on the phone.
Oh, okay.
Is it the 650?
I'm not sure.
Number?
I think so, but I'm not sure.
Okay. Okay, so I've unmuted that person to speak.
Hello, is this Michael?
May have to unmute himself also.
And I clicked that as well, asking him to unmute.
Maybe a star six or something, do you remember? It's a little different on some phones.
No.
No, I've clicked the ask to unmute a couple of times now.
We also have the Vice Chair. If Ms. Panis would be willing to do the presentation, otherwise I can do it. Can you unmute Jean?
Okay, so Ms. Panis is unmuted.
Hi Jean, good evening. I don't think Michael is here. Would you like to do the presentation or you want me to do it?
I think it'd be best if you did it because Michael is the one that wrote it. And I'm just not that familiar with presenting what he did.
Okay, I will. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so the report that's being presented to you this evening is the 2019 expenditure report for the for the bond program. So this is just specifically for the expenditure using the proceeds of the general obligation bonds. As you know, there are other funding sources for the bond program. However, the education code requirement is to just report on the Measure T and to make sure that it's being expended based on what was approved by the voters. So all of the 193 million of general obligation bonds that were approved by the voters were already issued. The first one is in September of 2016, the second for March 2018, and the last one was issued on October of 2019. For the 2019-20 year, the total expenditure is about 33.3 million. So this report is being presented kind of late, although we have just closed the 2021 year and we're talking about 1920. And the reason for that is that we have to wait for the audit report. So the audit report because of COVID was extended up to March of 2021. And so we have to wait for that report and it just put together today. So based on the audit report, the expenditures for the 1920 were determined to have been in accordance with the Measure U approval and also in accordance with education code requirements. There were no findings on the audit report, so it's in and also the members of the committee have reviewed it and they also found that all of the expenditures for that year based on the closing of the 1920 were in accordance with the measure sheet. So are there any questions? So included in the packet for the public is the audit report and also some pictures of the projects that were done as of 2019-20.
Right, so it doesn't look like we have any questions. I just want to say thank you very much to the committee and to Priscilla and Mr. Diaz, Mr. Robertson, the bond team, everybody. Janet and Mike, I believe you sit on the bond committee. And yeah, so thank you to the Oversight Committee, that's for the speed. All right.
Thank you.
Excellent. We're making good progress, right? That's exciting. Okay, so we're on to 6.2, I think. Just the Human Resources Department.
Yes, thank you. And Kyle, I believe you have my presentation ready to go.
I do.
Thank you.
There we go, no, I want this there.
Excellent, thank you, Kyle. Well, good evening to the public, to our board trustee staff. It's great to see everyone in the audience. This is a wonderful time to celebrate human resources. We are here to serve our staff and our school sites and be here for everyone for questions and so forth as we progress on. Human Resources is a really interesting department within a school district because we believe that we want to hire the best people to do the best job in all of our roles so that our students are supported and have an amazing education. So tonight, we're here to celebrate and talk about what we've accomplished and where we are going to move forward. And it starts really with our RCSD vision in the bottom corner. RCSD creates a safe and supportive, inspirational and rigorous, joyful and inclusive environment for all learners, and I might add all staff. And that is our goal. So next slide, please, Kyle. So meet the HR team. I call us Tiny But Mighty. We have five members here in the HR department and we really interact with approximately 1,250 volunteers, contractors, employees, partners, et cetera. So each person is very busy every day and this slide really shows the different people within the department, including Erin Kate Ghost, who is here on the call tonight, Director of Human Resources. She joined us recently. And Priscilla De Santa Maria, our credential analyst, who's been in her position for 10 years. She handles all of teachers and administrators' credentials and ensuring that we have properly hired credentialed staff. And then Jennifer Sandoval handles our classified hiring, interview, onboarding process. And she is the all-knowing person that makes sure people get paid every day because she interacts with payroll. Jennifer Nichols, our newest addition to the team, who handles substitutes, all things substitutes and volunteers, leaves, et cetera. So we have people who really are working hard every day, especially during the past 16 months as our work life has transitioned from in-person to working remotely, which is quite an oddity in education. Our brick and mortar schools were not necessarily set up for that type of environment in our work environment as well. So there was quite a bit transition during the pandemic. However, we have rebounded to a brand new year back in person and all that entail. So I really want to appreciate and thank my team for their hard work. It's not easy to be the bearer of frustrated people, the joy of having happy people in our lives that, you know, are joining our team and are really excited. So they manage the emotions of many, many people within our within our work environment. So I want to thank them for the hard work they do every day. All right, next slide, please. So some people ask me, what do you do all day long? And it appears as if hiring is the only job we do because it seems that recently we have, you know, spent a lot of, we spend a lot of time working on hiring and retaining people, but there are quite a few areas within human resources that a school district interacts with. So on the left side here on the slide, you'll see all the various parts of staffing positions and ensuring that when management and supervisors are wishing for a position, the HR team is really the entryway to ensure that that employee's pathway is properly set up and moves forward through the process so that they can work and be paid and so forth. So there's a lot of eyes to dot along the way. And we have platforms in place. We've definitely moved to an electronic basis, which has been very helpful, but many of that is is managed each day. So in the bottom corner, some of you may not know, is that when a supervisor has an idea about what they want to do, a new program in place, they put forward paperwork and ensure that there's budgets in place and then the HR team takes over. And we advertise, we make sure that we are getting the word out about positions that we have. And then we move forward through the interviewing and onboarding process, hiring and then turning that employee over to their supervisor for additional training. So tonight I'll be talking about bits and pieces of that as we go along. And then over the last 14, 16 months or so, our COVID-19 response and communication. We're very fortunate to have Shanna Laney back. We are moving that work back to Shanna Laney. So she will be moving forward with our COVID-19 response with our employees as of this past Monday, but up until this point, we have been very heavily interacting with our employees in regards to tracking, tracing, testing and so forth. So I'm pleased with my team that stepped in and really took on that role during COVID. It's been quite amazing. And then the interactive process to make sure we're accommodating any employees' needs, workers' compensation and injuries that do occur at work and all of the safety protocols that are needed in a workplace under CalOGE. And then professional development. So of course, ed services and supervisors give quite a bit of professional development, but there are required human resources trainings that are needed for onboarding such as mandated reporter, anti-sexual harassment, et cetera. There's a long list. And so we want to, we manage that series upon onboarding. But then throughout the year, there's also professional development that's offered through human resources. And that is primarily targeted at management. So we have a variety of different courses that are starting very soon. And then something new this year is our Aspiring Leader Series, which starts October 13th. We have 29 teachers signed up to learn about how to become an administrator and move into management in the Redwood City School District specifically. But that's really exciting news. And then we have added new systems over the past few years, our evaluated evaluation system that allows for an online platform for our management and supervisors to complete evaluations along with our substitute. And then other items, of course, which is important work in HR, is negotiations and union business. So I think some of the more public items that we do are contract negotiations, but there is also the grievance process and disciplinary action when we need to address various employee behaviors and so forth, but really with the goal to ensure that everyone has clear expectations and receive feedback from their supervisor. Thank you, Kyle. We'll move forward. So some of the accomplishments from last year was of course our COVID Return to Work protocols and systems. That was quite a feat and was constantly changing, so that was quite remarkable to move through that process. I know you've been updated all throughout. And as I mentioned earlier, the working remotely, there was board policy that was passed in distance learning and teaching, but really reacting to a workforce that wasn't used to that type of environment and listening and adapting to the changes that needed to occur for our staff. So this list is a variety of items that we celebrated from the accomplishments and the goals that we had the prior year. And we continue to work through these items as well. Next slide, please, Kyle. Some of our staff, I always want to make sure we have pictures in here. We have our office team at Roy Cloud and there is Principal Noise with Dr. Polino welcoming students back to school. Next slide, Kyle. So as I mentioned this graphic earlier, this really drives our work in the hiring process, which for certificated and management staff start in February and continue forth. As I mentioned in a previous meeting, we still do have vacancies. So if anyone knows of dynamic people that love students and want to work in our district, please send them my way. But the steps along the hiring process are intertwined between our union contracts and our ed code protocols and of course, the typical advertising, interviewing, screening, et cetera. So this is quite a bit of the work that we have been doing along the way. For classified members, this is ongoing throughout the entire year. As new positions come up and some are closed, we are consistently interviewing and attracting new classified members to our team. Next slide, please, Kyle. So we really like this graphic. This is an employee's experience within a district and hopefully for many, many, many years. Although with our new generation coming to us, our younger, newer teachers, I know there's a variety of the way that an employee experience happens with our youngest generation, and I'll speak to that in just a moment. There is definitely a dedication to the profession, but not so much to the school district, so I'll show some data on that in a bit. But an employee's experience really starts with determining what roles need to occur and having HR fly these positions. We advertise them internally and throughout the community, and these are the various ways in which we do that. There's different types of recruitment efforts for management, certificated staff and classified staff, but these are the highlights here. Next slide, please, Kyle. And then the onboarding, once an employee signs their contract, we want to make sure that they are going through proper you know, understanding of information, trainings and specific department trainings to ensure that the handoff between HR and their supervisor is seamless. And we also want to make sure that our management, even during the interview process, has a clear expectation of the types of employees that we're looking for to fit the right roles. So the calibration of interview response and ranking is put into place. And that's another way to ensure there's a non-bias, non-discriminatory process for interviewing. Next slide, please, Kyle. And then, as I mentioned, we continually develop and support staff and that's completed through many different departments. So this is the next stage that our employees will participate in and throughout their entire career in our district, in our efforts to also retain our staff. Next slide, Kyle. And so in doing so, these are highlights of the various professional development opportunities for different groups, our certificated, classified and management. So some of them vary, some of them are the same depending on the need. And these ebb and flow throughout the year and throughout the years of a person's career. Next slide, please, Kyle. So in an effort to retain our staff, usually it really boils down to competitive salaries, but also the opportunity for professional development, growth, feedback and the relationship a staff member has with their supervisor. When we survey staff, that is really one of the highlights of a person's experience in our district and in all districts is the relationship they have with their supervisor. So ensuring that our management staff is working on their relationships with their staff, giving feedback, et cetera, and their delivery is really appropriate. But there are other formal activities that we complete. And recently, you've experienced the employee longevity ceremony, the induction recognition and other recognitions throughout the year. And then, of course, the board-approved salary increases, which has been helpful. We also support our staff through days that are not instructional-based but are really set aside for professional development within each classification. And then another highlight, and I'm very proud of Redwood City for continuing this, is our teacher induction program. Many districts up and down the peninsula send their teachers to the county for their programs. We do this for our special ed program specifically, and you heard about that during the induction presentation. But we have kept our general ed induction program in the district and it's helpful for our teachers to be able to align with our CSD site and district initiatives and so forth. It is more difficult to have an in-house special ed induction program because there's a requirement in which credentials need to match. So mild mod, mod certificate, certain certifications, and our pool is much smaller of special ed teachers, whereas the county has more access to a broader range of credentials. Next slide, please, Kyle. Few more pictures. We have our groundskeeper working on the sprinkler system over on the left here and Principal Prestus from Roy Cloud. All right. And on to our workforce. Here is Tim Worthington, our PE teacher, ready to go on the first day of school. He had his mask on, was outside encouraging the students. It was a great sight to see. Next slide, Kyle. So this is interesting. We presented about various generations within our district, and this was the age groups I was discussing. So within each of these categories, our district's employees, and these are all of our employees, so classified management and certificated, are falling within these bands. So it's interesting, the ranges are quite similar. There's essentially three similar groups and then our traditionalists that were born earlier. We have eight employees that fall within that range. But it does help us forecast and anticipate retirements as we progress along when we look at the CalSTRS and the CalPERS program and the ability for our employees to retire at 55, but more typically at 60 onward. So it helps us forecast where we are expecting shortages and plan, you know, along the way. So we look at this graph frequently and the numbers that correlate. So we actually have this divided in even a greater depth. But I think what's also interesting is when we look at the generational differences here and the numbers of employees, we also honor the fact that certain groups, you know, communicate in different ways and relate to others in certain ways. Typically, traditionalists tend to like to work in person, face to face, whereas our millennials like to do everything electronically and Zoom probably felt like second nature. So making sure that we are supporting our staff in the ways that they learn and that they adapt is an item that we watch and look at carefully. Next slide, please. So I wanted to present some data for tonight. This is our certificated hiring for RCTA members. So we divided the groups accordingly. Remember, the hiring period starts in February and then continues forth typically till August, although we do have some vacancies still. And so what this chart will show you, and the subsequent slide will also continue forth with the remaining schools, is these are changes in certain positions for new hires and transfers in order to fill vacancies. So for example, So for example, at Adelante Selby Lane, there were three changes from 2021 to 2122 out of 26 general ed classroom teachers. So we either had new hires or teachers transferring in to fill vacancies. And then we see our out of support, excuse me, out of classroom support teacher, our TOSSAs. These could be reading intervention teachers, our MTSS, TOSSAs, et cetera. So out of four, there was one and a half position movement. We had no movement in our special ed teachers at Adelante and no movement in our speech and language pathologist teachers. And there is one teacher that is on an internship specifically at Adelante. So that's how this table is broken down. And you can look at each site and see how the changes occurred between 2021 and 2122. Next slide, please, Kyle. And we continue forth with the remaining sites. All right, then moving forward, our classified data. This is interesting to note, our classified staff is fairly stable, as you can see, in the sense of that these are positions in place. As we've shown you here, a three-year data between 2019, 2021 in September. We did add new positions and facilities, as you recall, our additional day custodians for our COVID assistance and cleanliness assistance. And then we also had additional instructional assistance that was funded through ed services that increased from one year, from 2020 to 2021, and/or site-based bilingual instructional assistance. So those were the two that were highlighted just recently. But other than that, most of these other classifications are essentially stable. Next slide, please, Kyle. So moving forward, as we progress along the year, we do have goals. And we want to, of course, ensure safety for all students and staff during our pandemic as we hopefully move forward and are in a better place next year in regards to vaccinations and so forth with our youngest students. We're excited about that to occur. And just making sure that our systems are in place, that is always first on our minds. And our interactions with other departments have this as a priority, of course. And we do have a new board policy and administrative regulations for equity for each department and human resources being one of them. So I will be bringing forth more information as we progress along throughout the year and continuing with our recruitment for our teachers, support staff and leaders, and filling the vacancies that we have and ones that will then arise again, starting in February. And then our workers' comp rates. We're always interested in ways to improve. We do have our district safety committee forming, and they will be meeting throughout this year to look at workplace injuries and ways to mitigate those. So those are our top four goals as we progress into the 2122 school year. Next slide, please. So I'm ending on a great note with our wonderful staff. It's great to see these photos. We have Principal Tina Mercer and her custodial staff at Roosevelt. And we have two employees in our food service. So we're ending on seeing those great smiles, well, under the masks, I should say. Thank you so much. Are there any questions?
All right, so I know that some board members saw this ahead of time and were able to ask you questions, Wendy. Oh, Mike, you took your microphone off.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to ask about the position change one for the sites, just because there's variability amongst the sites. Is that something that you'll be looking into the cause for that? And sort of, maybe it's fine, but is that something that you'll look into and sort of just see what the root causes?
So thank you, Mike. It's a great question. I do, we do know that every year we will have changes. It's just the increase at sites. So if we compare by site, year to year, that's a little bit more telling in HR than looking at comparing sites. Furthermore, we take out the retirements. People are going to retire for their own personal reasons. But to be honest, people, and that's part of what is really interesting, is we are discussing this around the county in my HR groups, especially that millennial generation. There's a dedication to the profession, but not necessarily a dedication to a district, which is different than other generations where there would be a career dedication for one district. So we do have exit interviews with our employees. And there is, I can tell you, about 40% move, whether it's a spouse relocation of work or family obligations. That tends to be the number one reason why people move, aside, or leave, aside from retirements, of course. But when we look at resignations, we do have a few that don't feel that our CSD is a fit, but we tease out those reasons and then circle back and discuss those reasons with supervisors and principals and so forth. But other than that, nothing is too glaring in regards to comparing year to year. And those percentages of change are very similar to our counterparts in the county. So we don't have a glaring difference between the percentage of people that leave one district versus up and down the county. So we've done that analysis as well.
HR is tough at any time and in any kind of organization. So I wanted to say thanks to you and your team. You know, the staff is how the kids experience their learning. So it's really important to have, you know, everyone that works at the school district. So, but thank you very much for all the HR departments doing.
Thank you. I'll pass that along as well.
I just wanted to say, I was in a couple of conversations the last couple of weeks just about staffing challenges in general in our county and actually the whole state. You know, I mean, we are in a bit of a crisis, to be honest, about finding talent for all the various positions, right? From teachers to substitutes, the bus drivers to cafeteria workers, administrators. So we're not alone in that, and that doesn't necessarily make it any better, but just know that, you know, I think we're right in there with everybody else. So I don't know that you mentioned specifically just finding the people for the positions as one of your challenges. Maybe you did, and I just missed it, but that is something that I know we've talked about in the meetings.
Yes, and it is frustrating. I'm not going to lie. Being on the peninsula, we have our HR meetings and it's always top of the agenda, vying for the same people or just the reduced number of applicants on the peninsula just because of the high cost of living. I mean, we've heard this for multiple years and it doesn't seem to be going away. But either in this pandemic, people either buckled down and stayed in their location or we found quite a few people just moving altogether out of this area. So that doesn't add to our current challenge. Plus, we have a statewide shortage of teachers and instructional assistants that has been widely advertised. So we are definitely in that group. What we really have noticed, and it's not a surprise, but it's been highlighted, is the referral from our current employees really make a difference. It's talking to their friends and saying, hey, come work for our district. We've noticed that that has increased recently. And so I do appreciate Jorge Quintana's help with the communication out to our community and so forth because we're noticing the number of applications with Redwood City addresses have increased and/or referrals from our current staff. So I want to thank them. But yes, Alisa, it is definitely a concern. I've never, in all my years working, have had these number of vacancies at this time of year, ever. And we started early. We negotiated with our union to start to fill hard-to-fill positions, February 1st, when normally it was mid-March. So that really got us ahead of many, of many things. We don't have bilingual, for example, bilingual positions open, but we still do have some special ed. So that's of concern.
There's a couple of questions in the chat. Will the presentation be added to Board Doc agenda? We can definitely make that happen. And then one question is, are DEI best practices part of the onboarding, onboarding, training and development?
So, yes. So specifically for our classified staff, there are departmental specific trainings. So the facilities crew come in and learn very, very specific week-long training on how to be a custodian or a groundskeeper, what have you. The office staff receive, we chief training from their supervisors. Teachers receive training in August. There are seven days that are non-instructional days, and some of them are professional development. So I think one area that we still need to bolster our training is with our instructional assistants. We are in such need of instructional assistants that we want to get them in the classroom as soon as possible, but we are working with our special ed department in finding a better way to spend more time upfront. However, there are trainings throughout the year that are scheduled. And that focuses professionalism, working with students and, you know, understanding sort of the role of an instructional assistant in the scope of meeting IEP minutes and so forth. So that is one area, our instructional assistants, that we're spending more time on this year specifically.
Any other questions, comments? All right, well, thank you very much, Wendy. Thanks for all the department does. And thanks, Erin, thanks for, I think if you're on the call, thank you as well.
Thanks.
All right, so we are on to bond program consent items. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Ryan and Janet, the second, roll call vote, please.
Lucy Wells.
Aye.
Lucy Lawson.
Aye.
Lucy Marquez.
Lucy Marquez.
Aye.
Vice President Yosokam.
Aye.
President McCall.
Aye. All right, we're on to 8.1. That's one of our bond action items.
Yes. Do you guys have any questions?
So this one is the turnkey security camera and intrusion system agreement for Garfield, Orion and Taft. Okay, I don't think we have any questions. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
That's Maria and then Mike, roll call, please.
Lucy Wells.
Aye.
Lucy Lawson.
Aye.
Lucy Marquez.
Vice President Yosokam.
Aye.
Aye.
President McCall.
Aye. And I think I did hear an "I" from Cecilia. It's just a little late. All right. Glitch in Zoom. Okay, so 8.2, which is the approval of additional COVID-19 safety compliance officer services.
Any questions here?
I don't really have any questions on the amendment, but could you just briefly talk about what these folks do? I know we've approved a lot of these contracts and I think it's a requirement by the state right now.
It is, yeah. Dom, do you want to pick this or you want me to?
Just at a high level, it doesn't have to be super detailed, but I was just kind of curious to hear.
Right, so it's actually a requirement by the San Mateo County Health Department. That's who requires it for us. That was back in April of 2020 is when it first came out. And it's still in place today. So the SEO, safety compliance officers, check every contractor, employee that comes onto the construction site and who they are, their phone numbers, their temperatures, the the wellness checks for proper tracking and tracing. And they do a really, really good job by, we have not had a single COVID case that has come out of the construction zones. So that's a tribute to what these guys do.
Great, they must be working at the county. I mean, that's one more reason why our county is successful, I suppose, in keeping COVID rates down. And I know it's been an added expense for the bond, which we were not expecting when we approved this, right?
Correct.
Good, good for you guys to figure out a way to make that happen. All right, okay, I have a motion to approve. Oh, no, we already did it. No, sorry, we haven't.
Not yet, not yet.
Getting ahead of myself. Let's ask.
So moved.
Okay, Mike.
Second.
Okay, Janet, all right, roll call vote, please.
Lucy Wells.
Aye.
Lucy Lawson.
Aye.
Lucy Marquez.
Aye.
Vice President Yosokam.
Aye.
President McCall.
Aye. All right, 8.3, which is adopt resolution 11, approval of new buildings, modernization and site work project order. Number four, and futility resolution for Taft School with Funko Pipeline. That's a mouthful.
Any questions here?
All right, do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
All right, Janet, and then Mike is the second, others in favor. Roll call vote, sorry. Sorry about that.
Lucy Wells.
Aye.
Lucy Lawson.
Aye.
Lucy Marquez. Vice President Yosokam.
Aye.
President McCall.
Aye. I think Cecilia is having some internet connection issues. I see her trying to come on. Cecilia, are you and I on that last one?
Sorry, I lost you guys. I'm now on my phone.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, we've all been there, Cecilia, for sure. Okay, so I think we're, thank you, Bond team. Appreciate all you're doing.
Proud of you, bye.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, we're on to 9.1. And this is on the vaccination. I know, Dr. Baker, you gave a little update that there's been a lot of activity in the last week with Governor Newsom, as well as I know I've been on some phone meetings and you have as well with the county, various people.
Correct, and I know today our attorneys, not only Attorney for Redwood City, but the other district attorneys, school districts attorneys, were also meeting with Claire Cunningham because every one of us had this item coming before their boards with a letter and the resolution. And then, as you all know, on Friday, Governor Newsom made the announcement that will require COVID-19 vaccine for in-person school attendance. And it all depends when the authorization comes through from the FDA. Because at this point in time, we're utilizing the Emergency Use Act for our vaccinations. And his timeline is, sometimes it can be as early as January 1st, and that's for those students that are 12 and above. And for those students who are five, who would start getting their vaccine at five, that timeline seems to be July 1st of 2020. And what you see on social media and what you see in the news press and according to AXA and CSBA, AXA is the Association of Administrators for California, CSBA is definitely the School Boards Association. Those timelines right now are not a guarantee. And so at this point, I know Nancy McGee, and she spoke a little bit about this today when we, just briefly, when Janet and I were at a chamber meeting about the mandates for vaccine. And she is working closely with the other Bay Area health departments to really help districts roll this out once it becomes available. We know for those children 12 and above, it is available. It is not a mandate. And for those children at the age five going forward, it has not been approved yet. So what many of us are doing are definitely working with the county. So what many of us are doing are definitely working with the county right now, the county office of ed and the county health department that as soon as something moves forward, especially for our five to 11-year-olds and also our 12, 12, 13, and some 14-year-olds within our district, that we would have vaccine clinics in the Redwood City School District. And that would be assisted by the county health department. The other piece that I'm doing right now is I'm in conversation with the Safeway Pharmacy. And the Safeway Pharmacy has done some clinics in neighboring school districts. And so I'm trying to see if I can get them on a calendar because if there is an emergency use authorization that comes forward within the next few weeks, I would like to start having definitely the Safeway Pharmacy, maybe clinics at a couple of our school sites to start there. Because the county health department is still figuring this out. And not all school districts will get the clinic, according to what I've heard. So with the Safeway Pharmacy, we could probably get it like that second weekend in November. And then again, four weeks later. And they are accepting most, insurance is accepted, and then they're also now including Kaiser. So that's where we are at this point in time with getting the vaccine. We are not as superintendents in the county or the county office of education. And as you well know, Alyssa and other board members who attend those county meetings for board members, this county is not going in the direction of mandating. So I don't know what you've heard, Alyssa, in your meetings, or Mike, or Janet, or Maria, or Cecilia, who go to the other meetings for board members. But that's the stance that's being taken at this point in time in San Mateo County.
Yeah, I'd say that's consistent with what we've been hearing. And when I, we've been on calls with most of the other districts attend and they have their board members and sometimes superintendents there. And I asked that very question, I think, just that just yesterday, yeah, just yesterday. And no districts are moving forward with a mandate in San Mateo County. But I think in part with the legal advice that we've been given and some of the health data within our county, which looks, you know, we have such high rates of vaccine vaccinations and people are really voluntarily moving in that direction. As well as we've got Claire Cunningham now kind of working and getting ready for when the mandate does come. Because we know we'll get some exemptions, so we need to be ready and process those consistently. We also are going to collect all the vaccination data cards. And you know, it's a whole lot of work for us, school districts as well. And it's important work, but we need to kind of be ready for all of that. So I, I am really proud of our county and how we're kind of working forward together. And the good news is, you know, just on the COVID front, what we heard this week that I think is very much in line with the data we're seeing in our own school district is we're seeing very low numbers of positive COVID rates in the schools. We're not seeing transmissions in the schools, which means that our COVID health protocols are really working. The face masks indoors, the social distancing where appropriate, the good ventilation systems, you know, all those things, hygiene. Everything we're doing is really working well. And so I think we have a lot to be proud of and yeah, and it's great that the governor and the state is finally going to step up and, and basically do it for the state. So we just don't have to kind of pick this off one by one. So that's good. Um, Janet, Mike, Maria, Cecilia, anything to add? And then we do have a comment. We can take the comment after. Yeah, I think we've all, oh, go ahead, Mike.
Well, I think the one thing I wanted to say is that right now, the, yeah, working on the vaccine clinics is really important. And pulling that in because that's something we can do now and we'll need it. You know, what I read from the governor's announcement said that based on the current conditions, they thought it was actually going to be July, not January 2022. So I don't know if you'd heard something different. But regardless of what path happens in the future, you know, making sure that we have, you know, we provide access to vaccination. I liked hearing that you're working with Safeway too, because I know the county requires, you know, a site that's big enough to be able to, I think they were saying 500 vaccines have to come through. And I don't know if any of our sites couldn't handle that. I think they probably all could, just because the students come in, they're all about that, that size anyway. But maybe that, at least the Safeway one doesn't have that same restriction. And I think that's where we really need to be focusing our time now. Which is good.
Yeah, Mike, just add to that, you know, I think there was some conversation, there's probably about, you know, 3,000 five to 11-year-olds that need to get vaccinated, right? The point was, you know, those numbers, we're going to need every vaccination clinic. And pediatrician, they were really encouraging people to go to their pediatricians. The pediatrician liked that, they can do wellness checks and other things. But the reality is pediatricians are not going to be able to handle that load because we're going to want to get everybody vaccinated as quickly as possible. So I also wanted to mention, you know, one thing that we heard that I think would be of interest to all of you and, and the attendance is that, you know, October 26th, there's supposed to be a big announcement from the science community regarding the health impact of vaccines for five to 11-year-olds. And I wasn't clear if that was for the county or the state or the feds producing that data. But then on October 27th, the San Mateo County Office of Ed and the San Mateo County Health Department, they're going to provide a countywide webinar on student vaccinations. And so I know as soon as we get that information, we can push that out to parents and staff. I think that'll be really interesting for, okay, great. Yeah, thank you for the, it's the FDA advisory panel. Okay, thanks. That must be the announcement talking about. So what's good is that we'll have a webinar for our county the following day with key doctors and things. So I think that'll be also another way to, for now. All right.
Right. So just to clarify, it's the FDA is holding an advisory committee meeting to discuss emergency use authorization for five to 11 on October 26th. So I think that's what we can expect to hear an announcement. And hopefully.
And maybe the science data may be something different. That may be partly FDA. It also could be something. I'm not sure. Yeah.
And I'm glad that, you know, we're getting a little bit of notice that these things are coming. Because as you know, we, the district needs to get ready. And with all the other stuff they have to do, it's good to have a little bit of time to get everything ready and prepared, as you said, collecting cards or information. So.
And we're becoming health clinics at our school sites, not just education centers. It's quite something. I mean, that was the other thing we were talking about this week is just the level of effort and the staffing that school districts have had to provide the last year and a half to help do all of this. And it's not, you know, it's not in our direct willhouse. Of course, it's important and somebody needs to do it. So we're stepping up and doing it, but it's a lot. Yep. Okay, so Cameron, I believe you had a comment. Kyle, if you want to unmute.
Okay.
Thanks, Kyle. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead. Welcome.
Thank you. So first of all, thank you for continuing the public discussion on student and employee vaccines. And I love the vaccine clinic plan. I think that's really great. The piece of the Newsom update that I, that I didn't hear mentioned was that Newsom encouraged individual districts to act in advance of the statewide mandate. So I, I continue my request to this district to consider, continue moving forward with a student requirement for in-person education. But that, that said, in the absence of such a full requirement, it doesn't sound like the board is inclined to act in that way. I do think it's essential for the community to hear from the district, which we haven't yet, on how it's effectuating the student vaccine requirement that's already in place for the district. And specifically, I mean, in the COVID-19 safety plan for Redwood City School District, as updated in August of this year and approved by the board, circulated to the community, posted on the website, posted to the county website. It's very clear in the extracurricular and athletic activities section. Quote, "The Redwood City School District will require vaccination for participation in extracurricular activities for those students who are eligible for the vaccine." So obviously, this is great. It's in line with some of these similar extracurricular requirements in other districts in the county. And it is essential to keeping our kids safe, particularly as we approach indoor winter sports, club activities, outdoor ed trips starting up, drama productions, et cetera. So I think it would be really confidence building for the community to get an update from the district on how this policy has been tracked and enforced for the currently eligible 12-plus population right now. And then also, as you mentioned, the FDA is going to consider the five to 11-year-olds on October 26th. And, you know, everybody is currently aligned on thinking they will fall into that, quote, eligible camp as well by Halloween. So it would also be helpful at the same time to get an understanding of the plan for enforcement of the, the current extracurricular policy for that, that additional eligible population of young kids. I, I would point the district to Raven, Ravenswood's virtually identical student vaccine requirement for extracurriculars and athletics. It has basically the same sentence that ours does, saying that it's required for extracurricular and athletics. But it follows it with a very helpful second sentence that says, quote, "Students who become eligible for the vaccine during the school year will have two months to provide proof of full vaccination before this requirement applies." So I would strongly encourage that we as a district follow that same timeline. You know, staying in line with the other districts in our county, but also that means that the five to elevens will have until approximately New Year's Eve to get vaccinated for extracurriculars and athletics. And I, I think that that's very important as we head into a lot of these winter activities that are moving indoors and raising the, the risk. Moreover, I think, given the, the high number of remaining unvaccinated staff in our district and with, staying with the soft mandate, I did think it would be essential for the parents to hear the district's plan to manage the participation of unvaccinated staff in those same extracurricular and athletic activities, especially the indoor one. I, I, I for one am looking forward to my fifth grade daughter's outdoor ed trip in February, fast approaching. But I, I think it would be absolutely reckless to send our kids on a five-day trip in poorly ventilated cabins with shared transient and communal meals with unvaccinated district staff. That just is, is an extraordinary amount of risk. And I, you know, I feel the same for the kids that are going to go into daily drama practices or indoor sports coaching and participating in, in clubs that are all going to need to meet and move indoors. So just hoping that you guys will provide some clarity on, on how that extracurricular policy is, is currently being enforced, how you're going to apply it to the five to elevens, and that you will give deep thought to the participation of extracurriculars for unvaccinated employees and how we can, you know.
Over your three minutes, I'm going to have to stop you. Sorry. Thanks. I, I think you make some good points. I'm sure we can look into that and incorporate your comments. So, thank you. All right. So we can check on the extracurriculars, Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Yeah, make sure we're following up on that with students and staff. So that's a good point.
Yeah, I forgot it.
All righty. And we'll continue as we talked about, it sounds like, to coordinate with others in our county and move forward together, which is what we've been doing all along with our county. All right. Any other comments or questions before we move on? All right. Thank you for all your work on this. Appreciate it. Okay. We are on to nine point two, the first reading and discussion of board policy certification.
Thank you, Alyssa. So each month, the board policy committee meets, which consists of myself and Janet Lawson and Alyssa McAvoy. And we look at new or updated recommendations from CSBA, California School Boards Association, that are sent to us essentially quarterly. And so there's a variety of ones to look at. Some are applicable to us, some are not applicable, for example, high school related. But we have five to present to you tonight. And the first one here on certification is an update from CSBA, which I actually really appreciate now that you've heard the HR presentation. But it does really focus on the preliminary credential and teachers, but more importantly, what happens when hiring efforts do not warrant a fully credentialed teacher. And what I mean by fully credentialed is a person that has completed the preliminary credential process and preferably their clear credential. So the CTC, the California Teaching Commission, has a great pathway to really manage and address as much as they can, it's not perfect, the process in which people who are interested in working with children and, and eventually getting their credential can do so through an emergency credential process and through internships and so forth. So as you may recall, last June, and every June, I bring to the board a declaration of need. So between February and June, we attempt to fill a variety of positions. And by ed code on June 30th, teachers must inform the district of resignations or retirements. Now, sometimes that happens afterwards, like we've experienced this year. However, the vast majority does so. And so as we move into the summer months, it becomes more difficult to to hire fully credentialed teachers, or it just the pool gets, that's gets decreased. So what we do is we make an assumption based on that moment of time of what our needs may be as we progress into the summer into August. So this board policy and ARs address those occurrences. And so this is an update. Are there any questions?
I'm just going to All right, so this is the first reading. All right. On to the nine point three, board policy 4216.
Thank you. So this particular board policy is an update which reflects the new law AB 1353. And interestingly enough, we already have this language in our union contract for class, for classified staff. And essentially, it states that the probationary period for a for a classified employee is six months. And so this particular board policy outlines the process. Are there any questions regarding this particular policy?
Okay. On to nine point four.
Okay, nine point four is regarding dress and grooming. And this is an update. We've had this policy before. However, I appreciate the new language that CS, CSBA recommended about ensuring that in the enforcement of the dress code, we are not discriminating based on gendered identity, gender expression, and a variety of other factors here. So you can read in the board memo, the specifics and within the policy, of course, keeping our attention to clothes that are appropriate for the activity at school, shoes that are appropriate for the activity at, at school and so forth. But really recognizing that we have to ensure that there aren't any discriminatory actions that are taken against students, including you know, hairstyles or items that might be on clothing. So this, this policy addresses that. It's an update. Any particular questions? This policy was also reviewed with the site administrators.
Yeah, thanks for doing that. That was something we had asked about. All right. There's no questions or comments. Hope we had to move on to the nine point five.
All right. Nine point five is the first reading of the board policy for the Safe Routes to School Program. So this is a program that, that, thank you to trustee McAvoy for spearheading as a point person in our district. But it's an opportunity to allow our community and district personnel and working with the Safe, Safe Routes to School organization to look at how students are walking or using public transportation to arrive at school, if they're using buses, buses or private cars or what have you. And we need to analyze the traffic and so forth. So Martin Cervantes has sat on this committee and Leslie Daniele is also a point person now for the programmatic pieces. Are there any questions regarding this, this particular board policy?
I just had a comment on, I think it's at the bottom of the first page where it says, "The superintendent or designee shall explore the availability of grants." And I wanted to know if that should be changed to May because in Prior years, uh the administrators and staffing have been short, so I want to have. The opportunity for you guys to maybe do it, but not require it. So that was my only comment on that.
Okay, thank you, Maria.
Um yeah, we've been working with um, you know, the city and then Redwood City together has done a lot of uh grant. You know, acquisitions. So that's a good point, Maria. Okay, so we can make that change when we bring it back for the final reading. Thanks for that catch. Um anything else? All right, great. And then we're on to nine point six, which is parent involvement.
Thank you. So it it appears as if this board policy comes back quite frequently, and it does. It does so as there are updates through CSBA. Through federal program monitoring and so forth. So for this particular board policy on parent involvement. It is updated to to note really an increased joint effort for the district's parent involvement policy. To be discussed with district personnel and parents more so than in the past, um and certainly in context for the LCAP. But we did not bring to you the ARs, the administrative regulations yet, because we still need staff to spend more time with the particulars on this. Particular board policy on the how that will occur. Uh so for now, it's it's the board policy that's coming tonight only. Other questions about this one?
Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Alrighty, and the bond team, we continue. So you'll continue to see these little chunks of word policy updates. So, thank you. Okay, so I believe we're on to our consent items and as a reminder, um we moved. Uh eleven point two to eleven point six are also on consent along with eleven point eight is consent. So do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Maria and then Mike, roll call please.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
Trustee Lawson.
Hi.
Trustee Marquez.
Hi.
Vice President DS Locum.
Hi.
President McAvoy.
Hi. All right, we're on to action items and eleven point one was pulled until a future meeting when we have an updated resolution. And we have eleven point seven, which is the amendment one to the memorandum of understanding between Redwood City and Rocketship. And we all saw the attachment. Were there any questions on that? And then we'll take the comment that we have. Okay, all right, so let's see, back to that. So we have Marie Alvarado Gill. Uh Kyle, if we could move her over. Hi, Marie, welcome, and you'll have a three minutes, please.
Hello. Good evening, trustee Alisa Green McAvoy and members of the Redwood City School Board. I am Marie Alvarado Gill, Regional Director for Rocketship Public Schools. I'm here today to publicly thank and acknowledge Superintendent Dr. John Baker for his leadership in education and partnership with the charter school community. The past eighteen months of the COVID nineteen pandemic has fueled a highly charged political landscape in education. It certainly has made the job of school leaders and their boards increasingly difficult. In a time where school administrators are scrutinized for pivoting from virtual schools to classroom based learning. And introducing additional safety measures to protect children and teachers, it is easy to forget that we are all in this new normal together. According to a new survey by the National Superintendent's Roundtable. Many school superintendents encountered so much over the top rage amidst amidst the COVID nineteen pandemic that they wrestled with whether to continue in their jobs. Nearly two thirds or sixty three percent of respondents said they considered quitting during the twenty 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 one school year. Action items eleven point six and eleven point seven is a clear example of how Dr. Baker has continued to lead the Redwood City School District. With both fortitude and community building in mind. He has been a resilient leader throughout the pandemic, and he has continued to teach me ways to navigate the charter district political ecosystem. To better serve the kids and the families of Redwood City. I have been working with Superintendent Dr. John Baker now for for the past five years. And I'm humbled at the opportunity to serve alongside him for five more. Thank you.
Very much. Thanks for speaking. Thanks for those kind words for our superintendent. All right, um great. So do I have a motion to approve eleven point seven?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Maria and then Mike and a roll call, please.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
Trustee Lawson.
Hi.
Trustee Marquez.
Hi.
Vice President DS Locum.
Hi.
President McAvoy.
Hi. All right, so eleven point eight was moved to consent. So we're on to eleven point nine, which is the adoption of resolution ten, approval of reduction of certain classified services.
Thank you. I'm bringing this resolution to you tonight because there is a request from our special ed department. That this particular position be closed and essentially laid off because there needs to be. There's a lack of work in this one particular area, but then my the next item on the agenda is an increase, so it's a change. And currently, this is a vacant position. There any question? Thank you.
All right, do I have a motion to approve?
Almost.
Second.
Right, Janet with a second with Mike. Roll call, please.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
Trustee Lawson.
Hi.
Trustee Marquez.
Hi.
Vice President DS Locum.
Hi.
President McAvoy.
Hi. All right, let's see, eleven point ten, which is personnel changes for twenty twenty one, twenty two.
Thank you. So I'm bringing to you tonight two positions. One is the Administrative Secretary Three for Special Education to support the preschool. And the other is an additional bus driver. We received a notification that we have. Twenty four additional newcomers that will need to be transported, so that will require additional personnel. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I had a question. Um Dr. Baker, I sent it to you, but I don't know if you had a chance to look at it. I was just.
I did.
Where are they coming from and where are they going to, the newcomers?
They're coming from all over the district and um Ms. Wolf gave me the information late this, which she gave, she sent me a nice little table. They're coming from all over the district. They're going to um Clifford Hoover. There's one school I forgot, Liz. There's three schools they're going to. Clifford Hoover can, I should pull up that.
Kennedy.
Kennedy. Those are the three schools they're going to, but they're from throughout the district. They're not at our newcomer centers. It's because of the influx that we need to place them at different school sites compared to what we had the previous school year. And I know you talked about the Clipper Card. It could be a possibility, but we'd have to see where these kids do live. We have the addresses on the data sheet, and I'd have to correspond that with the routes that we have from Samtrans.
Yeah, so what I, what my thinking was, you know, I'm fine with approving the resolution and the bus driver because we need to get the kids to school immediately, right? Maybe a longer term because we've been having a lot of conversations. For safe routes to schools is the opportunity to use Samtrans. Um you know, some of the best routes go right by the family's homes and the schools. Certainly, if you're in the ABC streets. As an example, um kids are already riding those buses. So anyway, um with that said, I'm fine to approve this, but I I would like for us to at least. Entertain that, particularly if it's only one bus driver for twenty four kids and they're all over the district, going to three different schools. Um but you guys will work that out because you're superhuman. Um all right, were there any other questions or comments on the the two positions? All right, great. Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Right, Maria with the second with Janet. Uh roll call vote.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
Trustee Lawson.
Hi.
Trustee Marquez.
Hi.
Vice President DS Locum.
Hi.
President McAvoy.
Hi. Okay, eleven point eleven, which is the personnel report.
Approximately four times a year, I bring to you the board, the personnel report which outlines the various leaves, resignations, retirements, etc. For our classified and certificated staff. Are there any questions regarding the personnel report?
All right, I want to say thank you very much for putting these together. They're always really helpful to look at. Appreciate that. Okay. Um let's see, do I have a motion to approve? Second. Janet with a second with Maria. Uh roll call vote, please.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
Trustee Lawson.
Hi.
Trustee Marquez.
Hi.
Vice President DS Locum.
Hi.
President McAvoy.
Hi. All right, uh report from board members and superintendent. Someone want to go?
Uh yeah, I did the um S R three plan review uh with stakeholders. I think that was last Tuesday and then the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee met. To which brought in some new members, so I want to welcome them. I know, I realize they're not here, but maybe on YouTube one day. But there there are a few new members and appreciate the work that they're doing.
So I also was at the Citizens Bond Oversight Meeting and um. Let's see, John and I went to the Redwood City Chamber Education Committee Meeting uh today. Um and just the San Mateo CSBA call, I think yesterday I was there, so Mike was there also, so I'll add that in for him.
I don't have nothing to report.
I don't either.
Okay, uh let's see, since we last met, I had a three day meeting in Sacramento with the California School Boards Association Board of Directors. And actually, it was the first time I've had an in person travel meeting like that, so I don't know if the rest of you have had that, but I have to say I was a little nervous. You know, before leaving, um but they did require either proof of vaccination or a COVID test, and we were social distanced and everyone wore masks and. Um they did a really good job of keeping us safe, both the hotel where we had fade and had the meeting. So. Anyway, so that was good. And so far, I don't think we had any incidents, so that's good to know. Um we had a very productive meeting. It was really good to be back in person. We've been uh conducting our business virtually like many others. And um we had a lot of conversation about uh the Governance Task Force and just governance in general with CSBA, and I'm not going to bore you with all the details around that. But if you're interested, let me know and I can provide you more information. Um we had a lot of conversation about um. Just governing right now and what school districts and superintendents and full people are up against with um. A lot of disruptions and anger and just um things in their school district, and I felt grateful that we do have some issues, but nothing compared to a lot of other places in the state. I feel like our community is probably more aligned um than, you know, in other areas, but I think some other school districts are really struggling, that's for sure. Um and actually, we're on that note, we're going to have a session that CSBA is going to come virtually to our county. And we're going to have something on October eighteenth, six to seven thirty, and that will be governing in the time of chaos. And we'll be hearing from their chief counsel and um or chief of staff, county council. And an education person just about ideas of how to govern during this time that we've been having. So I think that'll be helpful. And then Claire Cunningham is also going to join. From the county council and then Nancy McGee will be there. And certainly, John, you're welcome to join us as well. Let's see, we also got legislative updates and legal updates as well on that. So if you're interested in any of the details, let me know and I can send those away. Let's see, safe routes to schools, a lot of meetings, a lot of activities on that. And the good news is, uh thank you, Dr. Baker and Michelle Griffith and. Uh Meredith Park, who's been our volunteer. We were able to get uh Clipper Cards and monthly passes. Well, they're coming. I don't know if they've quite arrived yet. But they'll be here any day. Um for our seventy Adelante Selby students who are going to the after school program at CNA Youth Center. Um so that'll help them be able to get back and forth to school. And then we've just been doing a lot of work. Um Dr. Baker wrote. Um sent off a letter of advocacy to bring back Route two ninety five, which is a bus route that really. Connects a whole bunch of school, like um I think thirteen schools in our little zone, private and public. And Samtrans right now is going through a whole reimagining, so there's this really kind of unique opportunity in time that we've been working on um there. Trying to advocate for uh bus routes that work for our students. And then let's see, Mike already mentioned the S R three stakeholder meeting, and then I also met with the grand jury. Uh Nancy McGee and I did. We were invited to join them and it was just sort of a education one oh one, and thank you, Wendy Kelly. Dr. Baker for information that helped. Um I was able to help present, and they just had a lot of questions about community schools and mental health and. Special ed and all sorts of stuff, so uh that was kind of interesting to be there. All right, that's it. Uh Dr. Baker.
Mine have all been covered. S R three, CBOK, chamber meetings, they've all been covered.
Great. All right, and I just saw a comment in the chat. Uh thank you, Michelle Griffith. Thanks for all your work on it. She's been, uh she just said applications are completed and getting in, so this will be great. It'll provide. Seamless transfer for our kids. All right, thank you, Dr. Baker.
Perfect.
Okay, so. Quarterly report, that's information. Any questions on the Williams Report? Right. Uh correspondence. We do.
Okay, what about that one, Alisa, that we want? I think we all received it regarding uh child nutrition at one of our school sites, and. What I'm going to do is share that with Priscilla, share it with Anna, and then we can move forward and see how we can uh work with that committee. All right, so um Priscilla, you and I, I'll give you a a text tomorrow, see when we can, what time would be great for you to meet, and also Anna. All right.
That's great. And then I also saw Marie and Cecilia, I think you mentioned that the food committee is meeting later this month, so depending upon. What Dr. Baker and Priscilla and Anna thinks, but I thought you could also maybe discuss that and figure out if that's a place for you guys to get involved or not. I don't know, but.
Yeah, we we will uh probably add it to our agenda and just touch base on it depending on what John and they decide.
That's.
But on the positive, they have all these wonderful parents, and you know, if they're really, they're excited about it, we do need people in our kitchen, so.
You never know, you know, good point, Maria. Um great, okay, good. Well, thank you. And anything else? Okay, so other business suggested items for future agenda. All right, so board meeting calendar, the changes to the agenda, I did want to um say, you know, we're gonna move that bond study session. So I just thought we could talk about it and confirm it here. And. Eliana and Kyle, since you support us as well, um feel free to pipe in if for some reason you can't do what we're proposing. Um but I think we were looking at either moving it to Monday, October twenty fifth or October twenty sixth. And I think Monday was better for you, Janet, but I know you guys have a food committee, so I don't know if you want to go back to back, if that's too much for you. Uh we could start the bond committee at six thirty on Monday, or we could just do it Tuesday at six. I'm open to either. I'm open to either.
Tuesday's fine if that's better for everybody, too.
If it starts at 6:30, it's okay.
Yeah, so Marie and Cecilia, would you rather just go back-to-back and crank out the meetings, or would you rather do them two different nights and give up two nights?
I don't mind doing it Monday at 6:30.
Yeah, me neither, so I'm fine with it.
Alright, so they generally take, you know, an hour to two hours, I don't know what this one will take, but okay, alright.
Because I normally go for two hours from 6:00 to 8:00, so I'm sure this would be 6:30 to 8:30, and sometimes they also end early.
Yeah, okay, great, so I think we just decided Monday, the 25th, 6:30 to 8:30. Great, well, thank you for making that change, appreciate that, and I'll send Don Diaz a note, because I told him I'd get back to him on what was better for us, either of those dates were good for them, so okay, any other changes to the schedule? I don't know, Eliana, I glanced at it, but I didn't know if there were any changes from our last board meeting, or John?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. Alright, I guess that's it, good job, everybody. So do I have a motion to approve, to adjourn?
So I'd like to make a motion to adjourn in memory of Heidi Sholen, North Star teacher who passed away last week, I think on Sunday.
That's a wonderful tribute to her. Yeah, wonderful teacher, and I was actually thinking, at some point, we could have a tribute to her on an agenda item, which might be nice, yeah. Okay, so I had a motion from Janet, Maria, did you second that?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, let's just do a roll call for Heidi, Ms. Sholen. So, oh, Mike, you usually go, I don't, oh, go ahead, Eliana.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
Trustee Lawson.
Aye.
Trustee Marcus.
Aye.
Vice President Diaz-Locum.
Aye.
President McAvoy.
Aye. Alright, thank you, everybody.
Good night.